Great. Thank you and good evening, everyone, to the January 7th, 2025 meeting of the Douglas Board of Selectmen. If everyone could stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy New Year, everyone. We are, just remind everyone, we are being taped by our good friends at Douglas Cable in the interest of transparency. Thank you for what you do. For chairman's announcements, I do not have anything necessarily, however, I did want to bring up Dan Mascroft, who was interested in serving on the Master Plan Committee. Dan's appointment didn't make the agenda, but he is here, so I figured we'd at least talk to you, Dan, and then take formal action at the next meeting. So come on up.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And full disclosure to everyone, I reconnected with Dan about three minutes ago. We used to compete on the battlefield known as the HAB Indoor Soccer Friday Night Men's League.
That's right. And y'all welcome back on Friday nights for the over 40. Kick some balls. Be more players.
So you recently moved to town, I found out?
Yep, about a year ago.
And you're looking to get involved. So tell us about yourself.
Yeah, thanks. So I own a small business doing electrical and solar. We operate out of Whitemanville and got a dozen guys or so. And so I came across another resident here, and he was looking for some services. And he told me how involved he was with the town and said, hey, stop in on a meeting for the master plan. And I got the flyer in the mail, you know, did the survey, and I came to the last meeting and liked what I heard and like to just be a part of the future of Douglas. Don't plan on going anywhere. So just be happy to be involved however I can help.
Sounds great. We're always interested and eager for volunteers. Any questions of the board? No?
He sat in with us last meeting and got involved. So I think he'd be another good prospect for the team.
Good. All right. Like I said, we can't act on that tonight, but we will, at the next meeting, make certain that that's on the agenda. You won't have to show up, and we'll get that done. And I think at that point, you probably just get sworn in, and you're a full-fledged member.
Fair enough. Really appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Come back.
Mr. Chairman, I have something that I'd like to acknowledge under your announcements. Recently, a local business was visited by the First Amendment Audit Group, and the member of the Police Department actually was there. Is you two famous now? Officer Blanias, which I know his badge number is 56. But he very professionally, he did a good job representing the town and the department. I just wanted to acknowledge his efforts and how he handled himself.
Very good. No doubt. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Seeing as there is not, we have two, I believe, possible cultural council appointments, and they are here in the audience. Louise?
Yes.
Yeah, come on up, Louise, and your friend Alice. Come on up, Alice. So, very similar to what you saw with Mr. Mascroft. If you could just tell us a little bit about yourselves and why you want to serve.
Okay. I'm a Douglas resident for 51 years, and I like to try to help out my community in any way that I can, whether it be supporting someone or financially or whatever. My, one of my granddaughters was the recipient of the cultural council from a nearby town a few years ago. And I saw the joy and excitement that she was able to do her artistic abilities. And I thought, I'd like to be part of that, allow someone else to be able to show their artistic abilities and give back to the community.
Lovely. Ma'am?
Well, relative to Louise, I'm a newcomer to the community. I've only been here 25 years. Been a strong supporter of the arts all my life, taking my daughter back and forth to different events. She has a major in vocal performance and whatever, not here in Douglas, but elsewhere. So I always supported the arts. I have the time and the willingness to give back to my community.
Perfect. Any questions from the board? See how easy that was?
Thank you for calling.
Not quite done.
Nope.
So you mind if I just use your first names?
Oh, please do.
So I don't kill your last name?
Yeah.
I make a motion to appoint Louise and Alice. Can we do them together?
Yeah.
What are we appointing to the Cultural Committee?
Yeah, Cultural Council.
Cultural Council.
Cultural Council.
For a term ending in?
Yeah.
We don't have our ring here tonight to tell us when it ends.
Let's make it for a three-year term if there's openings, and we'll pick up the pieces if we have to later. So.
Second.
Made by Mike, second by Hal. All those in discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go. Congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Sir Valter? Yeah. So you run to the town clerk at some point, and you get sworn in.
Okay.
That's the final step.
Very good.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We've got our friends from the Douglas Police Department. Once one has now become four, five. And good evening, Assistant. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good.
I apologize for the chief not being here. He's patiently awaiting the arrival of his second grandchild. So we're thinking today's the day. So hopefully it all goes well. So just for an update since July of what, you know, we've had going on, we've had some incidents, nothing too critical. We got through Oktoberfest. We helped out with the tree lighting at the common, which is a new thing this year, which good turnout. We had quite a few of our offices there. Everything went well. We just got our second of the two cruises we were to get, you know, from July 1. They're great. We'll be getting two more next year. The chief is in the middle of, you know, getting the budget sorted out. There'll be some changes, just because we've had some change in personnel, so people at different steps and things like that. We promoted two new sergeants that replaced two sergeants that had left or retired. We also got an additional body for the school. We now have two SROs, one at the high school campus, and Officer Adam Wright, he's the addition. He's at the other campus covering those buildings. And then Finn is with Brett, you know, back and forth between the two. We, so we got an officer for that, then two other positions, not additional, just replacing people. So we have here Officer Nick Zanki. He just got out of the academy. Next name is Devante Peters. They both just graduated the academy a little over a month ago. And then Officer Chris Johnson. Chris comes to us from Blackstone Police. He was there for eight years, so he's got some experience.
Nice.
He's a Douglas resident. Him and his family live here in town there for the last four years. Officer Peters currently lives with his family in Webster, and Officer Zanki has lived in town his whole life, and three good additions for us.
Welcome. Younger and younger.
What's with the odd guy on the?
Just here to watch.
Party guy.
This is like a two-seat separation.
Yeah. Chief, we, depending on some time we had seen yet, I did want to bring, as we start our budget deliberations, to all the department heads, certainly welcome to be a part of our agenda. But I wanted to touch base with you guys in particular. Is there a particular challenge or anything that we're looking, either in the short term or the long term, out of the department, that we should at least have on our radar?
I don't think so. It's been, it was hard with two guys in the academy scheduling-wise. You know, taking an officer essentially from patrol and putting him in the school, it's great. I think it's needed. I'm glad we did it. But, you know, we felt it on the other end, you know, because that's a body we took off of, like, regular patrol. So, you know, additional bodies are always good. Getting that one is great. I think in the summer it'll be good, you know, because it'll be another officer out there. We actually are right now, I didn't mention, we're in the process of hiring a full-time dispatcher. One of our full-time dispatchers just graduated college. He's been with us a couple of years part-time, and then he's been full-time for at least the past year. He's great. We put out to hire an additional, not an additional officer, but replacing an officer that, you know, had left. And we went on with Sam Kontos, who, like I said, just graduated college, been with us for some time. We know his work ethic and stuff. It's good. We got some applicants from other places, and honestly, we weren't really interested. We want to train this young officer and, you know, mold him the way we want him. So we are going to be getting another in need of a dispatcher, but right now, we've filled, like, the month of February already with part-timers. So they're stepping up and doing their thing. So we'll take our time. They're currently doing interviews. They're training some people, whether they become full-time or stay part-time, I'm not sure. But other than personnel, I think we're in a good, we're in good shape, you know. And of course, a new building would be nice, but I don't think, we're there yet. We're making the best out of the basement.
Stay in line.
That we're working. I would say all things in time.
Yes, exactly. Exactly. But, you know, the state park this year was good. We didn't have any issues there. We've gotten some new technologies that have been helpful. We're able to, you know, get ahead of some things with that. So all in all, I think we're in a good place.
Do you have drones?
We do.
Probably a question.
Yeah. Yeah. We've had a drone for a while. It's really a good tool.
I don't know how.
Get with that drone. We've got the diddler out of the woods.
Yeah. Have you noticed any issues with that parking lot being opened back up on the ball?
I haven't. No.
No. I'm just curious, because that was a comment that was made, but I didn't see how it would be valid. But I just figured I'd ask you since you're sitting here.
Yeah, I haven't. And the only issue I ever noticed with that parking lot was somebody, like, stealing snapping turtles out of there that I remember. Hopefully they didn't eat them. I mean, if I know it's upstream.
Get real big.
Yeah.
We're still accredited? We're working, keeping and maintaining that?
Yes, we are. Correct. Yep. Yep. So we're, they keep changing additions and, you know, making it more complicated. It's never the same. It's all new, and we're rolling with it, you know. So it's challenging, but it's worth it, and we'll stay up on it.
And you had mentioned the state park is not issues. There wasn't an issue last year, but the state's been responsive if we needed them?
Yeah. I mean, we, we're closer all the time, so we're always the first to go. And then, you know, anything major, you know, we kind of hand off if we can, because it's, you know, it's their jurisdiction over ours. So we usually go and calm things down and then let them handle it. Or if they're not available, we just deal with it. But, you know, not to chase us for next year, but this year was a.
But that closing it for the day was a good strategy.
Closing it for the day is awesome. And I think that's what's handling a lot of it. They're going other places.
It seemed like it settled down after you did that.
Yeah.
Anything else on the Police Department? Well, welcome officers. Appreciate everything.
Thank you. Lieutenant Cruisers, this year, we're going to go for two more, and then we'll take a couple of years off.
Right. And then I think it's, is it two or three years?
Two or three years.
Something like that.
Is the cost up at all?
I just got, it's slightly, but one of them, so one's a line car, the other one's the chief's car, which ultimately, our detective cruiser is a 2015 with, I think it's going to have close to 200,000 miles on it. So the chief's old car will go down to him. We'll get rid of that one. So because the chief's car has less equipment, we have some cost savings there. So I think it'll probably be about the same. It may even have been a little less. I'd have to look at the numbers, but.
Was it all gas models, or did you like the hybrid enough to get another?
Personally, I don't mind the hybrid. These guys don't like it. And it is driving it. It is.
The new guys or the one on the side?
I'm glad you brought that up, because today, he told me how much he didn't like it.
Oh, yeah. So that's why he's over there.
I think so. Yeah. And it is, because it, like, when you first start driving it, there's a lot of acceleration because it's electric.
Oh, yeah. You have an electric car.
But then I think the more they drive it, it's the transmission and everything, it just gets kind of funky. So I only price out the gas models. And I think I did that because last year, to get a hybrid, it was such a weight. It was, maybe we'll get it, maybe we won't. So we just went with gas. So. And you brought up the Officer Blanias thing at the.
Yes.
We got so many phone calls, emails, and all this stuff commending him for the way he handled that from all over the country.
No, he did a really nice job with it, and he was knowledgeable going there.
Yeah.
Because they're looking to antagonize you and get a response.
They were successful with everybody else here.
Well, yeah. Well, yeah. It is a fun watch. So.
For a couple of days, every other phone call we got was about that.
But he did a nice job with it. So I thought it was important to acknowledge it anyways.
No, thank you.
I haven't seen that, but was there a pleasant ending? That guy tends to want to challenge.
For some of the people.
Yeah. I think that's a good answer. For some of them, yes.
Okay. I'll have to look at.
But, yeah. You know, he calls it a First Amendment stress test. So, I mean, that stress test tells you, and he wasn't stressed, you know. And he, like Mike had said, he was knowledgeable, and he'll do that accordingly. And, you know, it was a good outcome, you know, I think. So.
Could have been a situation that very well, easily, he diffused it very well.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, very well.
So.
Nice. Well, I appreciate you guys coming in. It's, you can predict it a colder day for you to come out, but.
Yeah, no, it's great.
Maybe it's warmer in here. Anything else?
Nope.
All right. Thanks again. Thank you for coming in.
All right. Thanks for having us. Thank you.
All right. Let's move on here. We've got annual license renewals in our packet. Douglas House of Pizza and Zmart come in a little late, but they're here.
Douglas Village package. Yeah, because they slipped through the cracks, so they're also on the.
Man, I was talking to my wife about this particular issue and some of the additional strains on our office as we were pushing paper and making this happen. And in her wisdom, she said, well, can't you just tack on a late fee? Is there, under our authority, the ability to provide a stick with this permitting process?
I don't know the answer to that. I did arrange for Rich Bowen to join us at 7:30 if you have questions. Or not, if you don't. Either way, I'll text him. It's, I've been here a while, and we haven't done, I don't think we've had one show cause hearing in eight years. It may have been.
Maybe with, were you here for that place that was taking the cars apart over there, Z and R, Z?
Yeah. So that was right before I started. I think that may have been with Jim Purcell his interim.
Yeah.
Which is not what I'm used to. So whether it was the city of Watsaka, Town and Tivity, we did show cause, like, all the time. Probably because there were more bar rooms in both of those communities. So you get a lot more activity, you get a lot more violations. But you also get into a rhythm as a governing board when you deal with it all the time. You start to build a procedure, and rules of evidence, and the things that you can ask and not ask. The police department tends to be much more knowledgeable about the same thing, especially those who work the overnight shift at closing time, and they're dealing with different owners and the different issues. Frankly, this is a fairly peaceful process. It goes through, I would like to think the people who put the scheme together would have thought of a late fee, and if they didn't put one in, it's because they're not authorized to. However, we'll look into it and ask Rich as something we can. It's not really a local bylaw, though. It's state statute, right? We're implementing somebody else's rules.
Okay.
I did go to a hearing, represented the town a number of years ago on an appeal before the board, and we were successful on denying there was a question of distance from the other purveyors.
You did save yourself a lot of headaches by basically banning barroom taverns in Douglas, saving a lot of trouble. It's not that you don't have bars, but they are part of the establishment that serves you.
Yeah. At least they have some food in their valley, too.
It was good to see everybody come running in.
To finish that up, yeah.
These are the last three licenses that we need to renew. One thing we could consider as a policy for the board, that if they don't renew in time, then they no longer get a grace period of a week or whatever it is to our next meeting. And you have ample time to give them proper notice now, right? And then remind them again in the fall, come September, October, you need to renew. Otherwise, I don't know what the process is, if you can, if there's a fine associated with it, that has to go to town meeting. I don't know how that works. But that may be a possibility. So out of curiosity, I went into Zmart today, stopped and got some fuel anyways. And so I walked in, I was just curious, because they don't have a valid liquor license. And they properly posted it on the doors and on all their coolers, that there was a change of ownership, and they currently are not selling alcohol. So it was good to see that, that they were actually following the rules. But it's not fair if a business chooses to figure out when they want to renew their license, and everybody else has been playing by the book, to do it properly. So there's got to be a way to address it. And you're on an even playing field now, so it's not, you're not targeting anybody. We can address it 12 months in advance, and give them proper notice that they, you've got to get a little more diligent, get your stuff done. Otherwise, you're not going to be able to operate for a week or two weeks or whatever you want to take to get your stuff together. Just a thought. But with that, would you like a motion to approve these licenses?
I do. We would.
Can we do all three together?
Let's do it.
Okay. Make a motion to approve the liquor license for Douglas Village Package. Make a Douglas House of Pizza Common Vic and Zmart liquor license. They are applying for a new license. So do we still vote to approve it now or wait until they get it? So we'll just skip over that one. So I'm going to amend my motion to approve the liquor license for Douglas Village Package and the Common Vic for Douglas House of Pizza.
Made by Mike, second by Ross. Further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ananmas. And on to, I believe, meeting minutes.
Yep.
And thank you, Lisa, for.
Yeah, Lisa and Jen.
Yes. As I look for those minutes, you know, you get into organizing this, and you get it all together, and there's just a couple that are hanging around, and it just interrupts the workflow. And, you know, my kids, they hear me talk about efficiency every day, and I won't do it now, but it really should be more efficient. December 26th, after Christmas minutes.
Matt, how do we make out with that, registering that land that was donated? Did that get done? That recorded? Yes?
So many thanks to Bob and Eric, who was basically the Lone Ranger riding around on his horse the day before the last, you know, possible date, but it all got done. So good customer service.
I would say as well as Matt, Matt got it analyzed and everything else. It was a good team effort. While you're away.
Motion on the December 26 minutes.
You all set on those, Ross?
Oh, good.
Make a motion to approve the December 26, 2024 meeting minute as written.
Made by Mike. Second by Ross. Further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ananmas, moving on to the MSG letter. Is this, this is obviously what Rich is here for. Is he available?
No, he was here for the licenses.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah.
Oh. I wouldn't have guessed that.
Well, I mean, I think we had some offline conversation about what would we do if people were not in compliance with the restrictions. And that has been rendered moot by observation.
Just to elaborate a little bit more on that, the question I had about it was the liquor licenses, where the local licensing authority, but they get their license through the ABCC, and they're not compliant, what's our obligation to do the follow-through on that? Obviously, they're in violation with the ABCC, but there must be something we should be doing from a local level, because it is serving, selling alcohol. So fortunately, in that particular, in this particular case, the business was cooperative and did what they needed to do on their own, with no instruction from us.
Is there any other conversation with this?
A little bit. I can give you just an update on some of the issues we discussed in open session. One of them was I was to consult with Rich Bowen over the advisability of paying our bills more indirectly. So rather than giving our cash to the group every month, almost like a premium payment or working rate payment, giving it to the third-party administrator, who would instead pay claims directly for us, so that any overage wasn't being used by MSHG for other purposes. We've explored that in some great detail. Rich didn't suggest that there was anything wrong with it, so it was really something we could do. But the logistics of it have become incredibly complicated, because since, since August, the group administration has pretty much disorganized the method of claim satisfaction. So HPI, as our third-party administrator, they're no longer paying pharmacy claims. Pharmacy claims are being processed by RX Benefits. And the reporting is being sent to Gallagher, and HPI is being invoiced to draw down on our account for a very indirect method. The problem with that is a lot of red flags for me, is that this creates opportunities or necessities for reconciliation. Because our pharmacy claims are really complicated. We have so many drugs that get rebates, and then the rebates are processed after the claim is paid. So there's a certain amount of net-net that needs to be done, so that we make sure that we're paying the right amount. And if they disentangle something that was thoughtful and well-organized, because HPI was managing it as the third-party administrator, and made it into this kerfuffle, you know, I'm cynical. So I don't think that people create chaos, except on purpose. So I think that, as our broker said, it's one way to blackball the data. It makes the data almost penetrable.
When you're presenting the app. When you're presenting the opportunity.
Right, presenting opportunities for people to mess up. So we're still going to explore the method of payment I have explained previously, but it's just going to be more complicated. It may take a couple of days for us to pull together what we want to do, and then it may take HPI almost a month to implement. The other issue that I've been exploring, and I still don't have numbers yet, I had asked Eric Kincher, who is a well-known analyst in municipal government who does basically, you know, forensic, how did this happen kind of financial modeling, and then he does some projections for some communities that have been in trouble. And he's very intrigued by the situation, but he hasn't given me a number yet, what it would cost for him to study. We had a very good conversation, and since we both do this kind of work, we were able to kind of gel over it. I don't think it should be five digits, and neither does he. So it's really, the issue is being able to get the right data and feel that you have an accurate picture of what's going on, because garbage in, garbage out. You can be the most sophisticated financial blogger in the world. If your financial data coming into the system is corrupted, then you are not going to get a good result. So that's something we're still working out. As for conducting an audit, again, not to be overly cynical, but the group failed to have an audit for almost three years now, which creates a pickle because how would they know that they are either issuing a correct surplus to towns with a surplus or charging the appropriate amount for those entities or entities in depth without having done an audit? So to my mind, if I think we still have almost a million dollars there, it's been a terrible year last year, we blew through some of our surplus, but if we still have, let's call it $850,000, would we or would we not spend 50 or 60 grand on an audit in order to get our funds?
To validate.
Validate it. So I've been talking to Clifton Larson, and I'm going to forget what the A stands for, but CLA there, they are our ARPA consultant. They have helped us with all of our reporting through ARPA in preparation for single audit. They're also a very reputable auditing firm. And we're having a conference call tomorrow morning to go through what it might cost because they're doing more than one year. And the one thing I want to impress upon them is that they do not have any other client other than the Town of Douglas. They're trying to help us get ours surplus. They don't owe any duty of anything to anybody on the board or to the treasurer of the group or anything. If they meet resistance, we'll have to deal with resistance. So having said all of that, this letter that we need to send them, and I did print out a copy for the chairman's package, it was on top, needs to be voted upon and approved by or dealt with by the board because you are the signors of the agreement. And I will, if you vote to sign it, I'll send it first thing tomorrow morning electronically and probably send the constable over at some point during the day to deliver it to the chairman. Once this letter is received, they have, if my recollection of the JPA is correct, 30 days to respond to us on the process going forward, how they are going to conduct the exit. And to the best of my knowledge, they have six. So we took some new entities on at the beginning of this fiscal year, so we were actually up to 19. You have six that are leaving for sure. And there are at least two that I think they're crazy if they stay, but I haven't heard what their choices have been. They would have had to send notice, preliminary notice by January 1st, so we don't have a meeting until next week.
They have to wait till next year before they can...
Yeah, so anybody who didn't meet the January 1st deadline with the first letter is now stopped.
For a full year.
There is a process in the joint purchasing agreement where if the fundamental principles of the group are altered, those who want to leave could do so and be treated as a timely departure. Because there are penalties for anybody wanting to leave in the middle of the year, significant penalties. But if you made a timely departure with notice, you're not penalized. So if you changed the individual rating system or other things that made the agreement palatable for us all to join, the agreement is structured to say, well, if you really hate that, get out and not be treated for it. But that might be difficult for them to invoke. So I did give you a requested motion because it contains the verbiage that I feel is necessary to satisfy the requirements of the joint purchasing agreement. And then I would ask respectfully that if you voted that the board signed it right away, and I will attach a cover letter to Administrator Webster.
After our meeting on the 26th, had there been any communication from SHG to the town?
We have, in the last 48 hours, had some very concerning customer service issues that I'm confident will be resolved, but there are indications of additional amounts of disorganization on their part. So actually, out of beneficiaries, been denied a very, very important pharmaceutical. And the provider in this case is Optimed, because it's a specialty carve-out drug, so it's come to us through Optimed, from Optimed to Express Scripts or RX Benefits. And a patient was denied their medicine, was told that MSHG no longer has a valid contract with them as of December 31st. Now, that was news to the Gallagher rep who's still managing our group. She's insisting that it's not true, but it's been close to 48 hours and they don't have a resolve. This is why, I'm just a different kind of person. The fact that these people have set into motion a series of events interfere with people's necessary care, to me, is one of the highest levels of offense that you can do to another person. We screwed up, so you don't get your medicine, and you have nothing to do with this. That's just outrageous. So that's kind of where I'm at with it. I'd like to think it's a simple internal mistake, but I think what's happened is everybody's asleep. It's kind of like cargo ships getting tossed around the ocean pretty close to shore. There's nobody on the bridge or if there's anybody on the bridge that are asleep. And, you know, everybody's just trying to get to where they're trying to get to.
Or hitting a bridge with a...
Hitting a bridge.
Somebody's got to steer the boat. So that's what I'm at. So it is important that your action proactively state that it is your intent to leave the group. I think it's important that you cite the relevant parts of the joint purchase agreement and that you direct me to send that notice to the board because that's the proper way to do it.
I'll make a motion, I'll read it because it's fairly formal there. I move that the Town of Douglas take all necessary steps acting through this board and the town administrator to withdraw from the Massachusetts Strategic Health Group effective July 1, 2025 pursuant to Articles 8 and 9 of the Massachusetts Strategic Health Group Joint Purchasing Agreement effective July 1, 2023. I further move that in order to initiate the process, the board sign written notice about withdrawal vote on the record this evening and direct the town administrator to forward the signed notice immediately to the MSHG Board of Directors.
Second.
Motion's been made by Hal and seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's 5-0 unanimous. So Matt, we will sign that.
We'll use one of the ones here.
So there's only one copy of...
There's only one copy, and Tim knows it somewhere.
Oh, I don't have it. He's got the one with the line.
You've got your name next to a line to keep the process moving.
Yeah.
Matt, we're just happy we got packaged.
Yeah.
This is on this item, too. It also shows, I mean, that there was, you know, possibly three members leaving and the other six members leaving, and it's a 12/3 of the group, so added to the exit.
Yeah, we had...
What you had mentioned as far as withdrawal penalties, it almost seems to me, I don't want to say it's a forced withdrawal to get your penalty, but it just doesn't, to me, it doesn't sound...
So I wrote the agreement, I'll tell you why I did it the way I did. When you have a group like this, you don't want somebody to surprise you in the middle of the fiscal year and say, I'm upset with my rating, I'm upset with my plan, I'm going to just, I'm out of you, I'm going to leave. Because we make financial plans and we have contractual arrangements with several vendors based on the total number of covered lives. So if a big group, a Grafton or a Franklin or one of the bigger school districts were to leave, they might take us below a threshold. So we'd be in breach. So if they're going to do that to us by withdrawing out of step, they would pay penalties.
Yeah, yeah.
But this is traditionally renewal time when we're getting our rates. So to withdraw now is fair.
Right.
And they're giving the group six months' notice, and you're staying until the end of the fiscal year where all your contracts end anyway. So you would not be penalized as long as you met the notice requirement.
The process of withdrawal.
It was a heavy-handed way to do, but these agreements have lots of heavy-handed provisions in them because it's like herding cats.
If everything falls into place, how much money would the town be receiving back?
So there will be a reconciliation. So to explain the process, we know that last year we ran at about 119% of our working rate, which is a really big blow through. We had aggregate coverage at 120. So we would have, we would have stopped the bleeding at 120. But 19% of a lot, it's a lot of money. So last year, we ended the year in deficit over $800,000, but because we had a surplus of well over $1.4 million, our claims were paid with our own money, and we still had a substantial surplus. So far this year, we're running quite strong. Not kind of like, we do have some claims in the pipeline that might change that, but we're well below 100%. So, you know, you try to be in the high 80s because you have fixed costs on top of your claims. So your medical loss ratio is in the high 80s, and you have maybe 12% or so stop loss, which is your next biggest item. You're going to come right up to about 100% of what you paid in. And that's kind of the goal every year. It's not kind of the goal. It's actually a goal that's enshrined in the agreement that any number of groups are not in compliance with. Two things, I'll go back through the process now. So what will happen is, it is incumbent upon the group to have, to close their books in June 30th, and there's time built in under the agreement for them to do an audit and have a final number. This is what you owe the group, or this is what the group owes you. And then you wait on a run out of claims for a full year. Now, there's nothing unusual about this at all. This would be standard practice. Our stop loss contracts are 1224s, so we would wait until the full run out of this year's claims over the course of 12 months to the end of the stop loss contract to make sure all of our claims from the period had been processed and were satisfied and that all of the stop loss that would attach is attached. And at the end of that period, you are basically out of the group because there shouldn't be anything else coming in that would need to be paid. There is a provision for whatever white trail that long, but it's important that that period run. So if we got our money out, it would be a year from July, so about 18 months ago. And it would be net of the run out of claims.
Yeah. That looks around $600,000, I guess.
Well, I think we're sitting on a balance of about 850 right now. We're running about 200 to the black right now, six months into this year. That can change. But I don't, I do not anticipate any scenario that we would owe the group any more.
Yeah.
That would be a...
I'm somewhat happy that we're not owed well over a million dollars. Because I think the process of extricating our funds will be somewhat easier. Question will be, was last year an outlier or not, which kind of falls into the town administrator's report because we're looking to do the, to start the budget process. And this renewal tends to be a very important part of our lives because we can't do anything about pensions. You know, the cost of the pension is built into our budget to go up about 10% a year. That's the town's contribution. That's a function of the census, our payroll, so what we actually pay people, and any financial forecast that's done by the actuaries for the pension liability. So we are supposedly on track to reach 100% funding by 2036, if I understand this correctly, in the Western Regional System, by going up 10% a year. So this is a really dramatic movement, and we don't control that. Property and casualty insurance, I have good news. While we have bought more stuff, and it's worth more, so the cost of insurance goes up with that. A primary driver of our annual premium for property and casualty insurance is losses, and they have a seven-year look back. Good news is we have a very significant loss that is falling off the look back this year. So this should mollify the need to continue to increase our premium because they're not looking at, they're looking at a smaller body of losses. And I believe the issue there is the flood that occurred after a broken pipe at the school.
Yes.
That was my first year here, and that was well over a million dollars, and that's going to drop off the look back. So that's good news, that should help the budget. I think the most important thing to bear in mind as we get into the budget season, this is the year where education is going to drive the budget process. So the contract, we're negotiating with teachers right now, contract that we already finished with Paris, the school bus contract, BBT in Norfolk. So I anticipate an unusual increase to the Douglas Public Schools as being a necessary component of this year. And I say unusual because we've been chuffing along barely, making the crest of the hill at 1.5, 2% a year. We supplemented a couple of years back to settle a contract with the teachers to rectify their structure of their comp table, but that was free cash. Right? And we caught them up slowly but surely, but still not at a very quick pace. So now we're in a completely different world, and we're doing our comparisons with where we are, and we know we have to make adjustments. Even our opening position as a negotiating team was not 000. We did not start with 000 because it just would have been a productive place to start those talks. So that's what I am looking to really drill down on. And the other thing that has been very volatile in the school budget has been special education, so every component of it. Special ed, transportation, cost of staffing, and decisions around out-of-district placement versus in district. Those decisions can have a huge impact on the budget, and the level of engagement provided is an entitlement. Thus, we don't have a lot of wiggle room, and to do what's right by our students, we have to provide the level of engagement required by their IP. IP is settled by specialists, determine what's necessary. So that's a really big wild card. Now, I heard today from Senator Fatman that... Now, I heard today from Senator Fatman that there might be some motion at the state level because this is a Commonwealth-wide issue to enhance the Commonwealth's support for municipalities dealing with this issue.
For special needs.
School districts, for special needs. And that might come in the form of tweaking either the circuit breaker program or the base level of support.
We had talks about collaborating with some of the area communities for some of the special need services at one point.
I am not afraid to be outspoken on this particular issue. I think every single year, the Finance Committee has to ask, I feel the Select Board has to ask, not to be told that it's done, but to be shown the analysis of whether it is more cost-effective to own our own buses and hire our own drivers, or to continue to hire a third party to transport students. Because it is, when I say it's wildly expensive, I'm telling you, twelve hundred, thirteen hundred bucks a trip. And it's just a lot of money. Or maybe that's over a week's period, whatever it is. That bill, I signed the warrants and I'm looking at those bills saying, that is a tremendous amount of money. I don't resent the need to send the student to where they need to go. That's silly. That's a pointless conversation. But the conversation about whether or not it would be more cost-effective to do it with a town bus is a math problem. If it doesn't make sense to do it, then don't do it.
And you're suggesting something similar to the.
I know what we spent on our bus, right? And our bus is very well-equipped. So I'm just, when I think it through, I think we're starting to get to the point where there's an inflection point, we need to have that conversation. Nobody wants to hire more staff, right? Because if the staff works enough, then they're benefit-eligible and blah, 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 it turns into a mess. But at the same time, we're just paying an awful lot of money.
And if you, not to interrupt, but if you notice the amount of kids on a school bus, they're not nearly four.
Well, that's different. Those are your big yellows. We went down that road with schools and I think we, maybe it's time to check in again, but it was probably four years ago now, it was right when Superintendent Bierra started, or maybe right before he started. We hired a consultant who did an efficiency study. It wasn't that we could eliminate routes. We knew we could eliminate routes. The question was, could we eliminate routes and still meet the threshold requirements of transportation for the kids? We try not to leave a kid on the bus for more than forty-five minutes from the time they're picked up to the time they're brought to school. So while we could have eliminated maybe even as many as three routes, it would have meant kids were on the bus for an hour, fifteen. So we had to opt to keep emptier than necessary buses in order to meet the service requirement.
Time, yeah.
And like I say, I'm not gonna say I know the answer because it's a kind of a complicated thing. You gotta get all the data and compare it. But we really are getting to the point now where it's really expensive. So we might be able to, for instance, provide workers' compensation coverage for a school bus driver, a special needs school bus driver, at a much more competitive rate than our private partners are. I think that's one of the areas where this is rough. We may also, because we use, we're tax exempt, we may be able to buy fuel at a much more efficient cost. So there's a lumber of things that need to be considered. And I'm not interested in being told that some analysis, I wanna see it. And if I, what I see is thorough, we'll just follow the numbers, believe the numbers.
That was one analysis. What I was looking for is that we're talking about collaborating with other communities with somebody Northbridge would want one type of program and people would be bused in from the other surrounding towns.
I don't know that I know enough to know.
Yeah. We talked briefly about that. There was some effort to see if we could get the towns to collaborate.
Well, specialized.
Yeah, right.
And I remember that conversation was, put the area schools each individually specialized in one aspect.
Right.
So maybe you had.
That's what I meant.
You know, developmental delays being the specialty of one school district, the other school district was more trivial. I don't, haven't seen any progress on that. I think what you end up with is, you don't always know what you're gonna get.
Yeah.
And sometimes people are choicing in to Douglas because they like a program, a teacher, you know, my neighbor said that did a great job with my kids, or not only said my, but I live in a different town. I am very sympathetic to the fact that these are very expensive programs to run and the school department is rolling with the punches. We don't fully know what we're gonna get until right in the last minute when our own kids are enrolled. That's hard, that's hard to plan without that.
I know people that have moved from Rhode Island to Massachusetts to take advantage of the better support that they receive here rather than Rhode Island.
And it goes right, I mean, I can see where in Barrowville that might have been the case. I'm from Cumberland. Dr. McGinnis, our superintendent, when I was in high school, was one of the most forward-thinking and innovative superintendents in Rhode Island dealing with special needs kids. And for a while Cumberland was a magnet. And we don't have choice like Massachusetts. People had to move to Cumberland. But the town was growing very rapidly and the housing was relatively affordable. And that program exploded. And it was very controversial because there was, it was costly. But at the same time, Dr. McGinnis was a compassionate dude and he was really investing a lot of energy in to get the right people to deal with the right issues. When was I in high school, forty years ago? How much has changed now? Title I and all the other laws, it's just changed a lot since then. You just want, I think, at the end of the day, the declaration of victory comes if you can just do what's right by the kids that are eligible to be in the system. I mean, I'm always gonna be, collaboration has proved to be more difficult than any of us appreciated. If we can't buy health insurance together, then I'm not wild about trying to do special ed together. Just saying. In terms of, so those are the three major trends I see in the budget that I'm gonna have to wrestle to the ground, health insurance, property casualty, and education. Other things that are occurring, we did get a nice boost of money, and I sent you guys the notice, I believe, of the Chapter Ninety, additional funds for rural communities. I intended to. If I didn't.
It's in the other packet.
We got about a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in additional funds on that Chapter Ninety. So that's nice. I did sign, speaking of the cultural council, today I signed a contract, I think we've already accepted the funds. There was a sunset though on the contract that was gonna be before your next meeting. So I just, I assume we're gonna accept the funds, I decided. It's eighty-four hundred dollars and it has to go into the revolving fund.
For cultural.
Set up. There's an article in the warrant every year that's those revolving funds. We're not gonna have a conversation tonight about municipal light and power. I gotta tell you that we live in a competitive marketplace. So at your next meeting, we do have to push this along because we're getting to the point now where we're reaching out to a lot of people and making a lot of contact. So think of this problem as having two aspects. One aspect is, is the data center community interested in developing a facility here? That's one question. If the answer to that question is yes, they'd like to be here, then how will we get them We need to explain, and people need to understand, the order of magnitude here. We get a nice bump with one, one million square foot warehouse that basically offeats the need for any further tax overrides for the town for a good five years. But I think we've proven the track record that we can stretch that to seven or eight and then hope that the engine keeps growing and we don't need to ever have that conversation again. I certainly don't want to. Based on just one, one million square foot building, that is basically an empty shell with not a whole lot in it that we've begun the tax yet. Data center campus is a completely different animal. It is many times more valuable. And it stays in your budget and sticks with you and fuels your budget for many years. That being the case, it's a highly attractive opportunity. The things that have irritated people for many years could be resolved very easily with the kind of revenue stream that data center brings in. So when you think about, you know, would we ever be able to address the cost of sports programs at the schools? Would we ever be able to think about being aggressive about managing our spend costs because we would have enough capital spending available to buy buses?
Police Department.
I wanna get a highway bond first.
Yeah, no, I know, yeah, sure.
When the lights are out, the highway bond, I'll talk about anything else being an option or opportunity. But replacing a ladder truck that covers wind that's now one point eight million bucks to shield the taxpayer from the shocks of those things, you probably do need to do more than warehouses. The downside of warehouses, they put traffic on our roads. It has been idiot central at the corner of North and Northeast, if you haven't noticed.
Signs laying down.
These boneheads that drive the Amazon trucks are taking a right from Northeast Main onto North. For what? I don't understand. Their facility is directly next to one forty-six. They have absolutely no reason to come into Douglas and yet they do. So this is the level, we're not dealing with smart here. We're dealing with people who probably missed an exit or missed a turn somewhere and now they're lost. So they're panicking. They wiped out the whole sign. The last idiot today, shortly before your meeting started, dragged cones all the way down to Charles. So obviously, being a host community for warehouses is not the ultimate place to be. It was an opportunity that was presented, it was the right piece of property, and the investor was willing to, picked up a lot of slack for the development of the infrastructure. It was a good opportunity, it's gonna work out for the town. Do we want ten of these things? Absolutely not. Do we want five? No. So data centers got a couple hundred people, major warehouse campus would have several hundreds, not to mention the trucks. So it's just a completely different approach. But there's a downside. The downside is you can't build those things without power. And it's not a question of being able to turn the lights on when you need lights. They run twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five point two five days a year. Computers inside the data center must run. They cannot fail. There has to be a failover plan and reliable power, reliable, clean power.
Well, the only way you're gonna move this forward is you just gotta figure out how much power you need and how you're gonna generate it and just put it out on the table. We've danced around this conversation a couple times.
Is how much power would you be willing to support? So there's a really big difference between the data center campus powered by a four-hundred megawatt plant, cogent, versus a one gig level investment. And that's the conversation that we need to have because I can see our way towards having a conversation. Because I think we could put enough green, environmentally sensitive, renewable energy resources into the mix to legitimize a two-hundred or even four-hundred megawatt plant. If you wanna know what one looks like, drive down Orange Street, look to your left and Ocean State Power is four hundred mags. Just look at it, that's what you're looking at, being on the highway, maybe in the hole closer to the sun. Versus a gig, which is two and a half times bigger and a massive draw. That's what we need some guidance on. Now, what I'd like to do, and Senator Fatman is willing to pursue this for us, is invite Secretary Yao, who is the Secretary of Economic Development and Housing, to a conversation. Whether we have to go to her or she comes here, have a conversation about the suitability of Douglas as a development site for this specific asset. I agree with the conversation we had with one of the landowners and Senator and Economic Development Staff and I this afternoon that we can probably have an intelligent conversation with the pragmatic forces inside the current gubernatorial administration for one topic and one topic only, data centers supporting artificial intelligence. Because that is a priority of the Healy administration that they have announced. And the conversation kind of goes like this. You cannot do AI with data centers if you don't have the energy to support it. If you don't wanna generate that energy in the population centers in the eastern end of Commonwealth and you're looking to Westfield or Central Massachusetts and Worcester County as being, who's gonna pick you up and take you there, then you're going to have to have a conversation with your support and your coalition that got you elected governor about prioritizing certain parts of state for that AI development, including fossil fuel consumption. If you're gonna put your hands in the air and say you're not gonna do fossil fuels anywhere, then it's pushed from the shelf time because you're not gonna get AI. End of discussion.
Unless the state's behind it.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. If the state wants AI, it's gonna have to review its targets and maybe set targets for us as the municipality supporting the development to do enough green energy and enough carbon saving to offset the impact of a power plant. That's a conversation that we need to have with the Commonwealth. So I'm, this is an exploratory conversation, so I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna make that invitation on behalf of the town, so I'm not making any commitments, to have that conversation with Secretary. Now, Westfield, we are engaging extensively with our counterparts in Westfield, it's a bigger municipality, right? If you've been out there, I think Westfield's kind of a cool town. It's a college town, it's got that sort of old industrial vibe, but it really is kind of out in the middle of nowhere. And they've made all of these, they've had to make all of these independent steps to be viable as an economic entity in the middle of nowhere because if they don't make those investments, they don't get anything. So they already have, they've got some polite and power plant that generates about two-hundred mags. It's a cogent plant, shares energy and the heat energy with Westfield State University, which is right next door. So if you're on the campus at Westfield State, you look over the tree line, you're gonna see the stacks of power. They're gonna double the size of their power plant on their existing property to support a data center investment, I believe, directly alongside. Westfield is like Douglas, they have a natural gas pipeline that runs through, they're sufficient, because of the university and other investments, they have sufficient fiber capacity to support all that data moving. So they are about four or five steps ahead of us. They already have the structure, they already have capital stack lineup.
What advantages do we have if we're competing with other communities?
There's no site like Pine.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna sound like Dorothy from.
Yeah.
No place like home, there's no site like Pine. Pine has everything. So you have high tension wires. You have a high-pressure gas line that runs right through it.
Right, yeah.
The town has built out water and waste. The town has built out water and wastewater infrastructure to support it because there is some, there could be some need for water.
Yeah.
And you're directly next to a highway.
Yeah.
To the extent that your staff's going to come in and out, they don't have to live alongside.
They come from Providence or Worcester.
Come from anywhere.
Okay.
So there really is no site like Pine. Except that, there is no electricity, none available.
You're right.
So that's.
We'll have a separate discussion on the municipal light plant.
Yeah, that's a separate discussion. I'm putting this into my update right now because this is taking up more and more of my time. So we are going to, we're not going to drive out to Westfield just yet. That could actually encompass us. I don't want to spend any time on this if the community doesn't support it because economic development is a thing. So if I'm not, if I'm allocating time to something that the people don't want, it's a waste because I've got to turn to what they do want and try to get that. Can't do both. I really just can't. Because this entire conversation about data centers takes Douglas, which is a small town of 9,000 people, and we're starting to punch at the weight of a 40,000 or 50,000 strong community. That's our competition. So if we're going to do that, we're going to have to move resolutely and quickly to get people's attention. We get the door open for us once if we have our ducks lined up in a row. Dartmouths, Westfields, West Oros, Franklins, they can get the door open two or three times to talk about their ideas. We get one shot.
That's our side.
It's going to be polished up and ready to be done. All right? So that's where, Mr. Chairman?
Well, that was, that was good. So in the packet is this document, this White Page paper. I would just ask the board to continue to pontificate whether that's a direction we want to go, but I think it's intriguing enough that.
Mappsey did a really nice job on this.
Yeah.
This is a really good summary.
Yeah.
It's not too technical.
And it shows that it can be done and.
Even if you didn't need the AI, a municipal light plant still might save people money.
I would still ask the board to pursue the concept, but for a completely different purpose and in a completely different way. So the conversation, the secondary cover, I'm back at it, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Is whether or not this part of Massachusetts is being thought about as a priority by National Grid in building its 20-year plan to be in compliance with climate change and other initiatives. So it's a huge document that they filed, 2,500 some odd pages. I think there's thousands of pages of exhibits. So the question presented, so take all of this economic development and just push it off to the side. Say, maybe it happens, maybe it doesn't. If the Commonwealth is going to push significant electrification objectives onto the municipalities and we are at the end of the feeder lines, we will get whatever's left after everybody grabs the power they need to run their community. Those three feeder lines finger their way into Douglas and terminate here. What if there's rolling blackouts? Who's going to get rolled out first?
Yeah.
Guys at the end, right?
Yeah.
They're not going to wield the power to us so that they can shut Lexington down. It's not how that's going to work. Not that the feeder runs to Lexington, but exaggerating.
That type of community.
So there's definitely a question about being able to run your economy and your community with reliable power. And the plans don't include, current plans, the National Grid has submitted, don't include any infrastructure build out in Douglas. So there's no substation. We need, we know we need a substation just to run the warehouse facilities we already have. And our lines, this one, one of our feeder lines is subscribed to the point it's almost 200%, right? The reason why there's no conflict is because the load isn't occurring at the same time, right? That is a separate and apart question for the town of Douglas, whether or not we want to do batteries, solar arrays, a substation, either with or without a municipal light and power company, just to be able to meet the electricity needs of the people of the town. That's a different conversation. But it's the next one I'll have, if all this economic development stuff is just two pie in the sky for, not ready for primetime, fine. But we're not going to escape the conversation about power because nobody's planning to take care of you. It's just, that's where we're at. We're not part of anybody's plans.
Just to maintain ourselves is concerned.
You know, I've said to anybody who listens to me, I don't think you're paying attention to the economic development momentum that Sutton, Northbridge, Douglas, and Uxbridge have put in place. All four of these communities have pretty significant projects going on that are not going on in the rest of the state. You drive around, you don't see this level of activity. So I think there's a bit of a mismatch on the part of the power utilities prioritization. But I think on their end, it's because their physical assets are so far behind what they need to be that they would need a major upgrade to upgrade us. Major. And I don't see them as willing to make that investment.
So that means that?
It's an opportunity for the town to be in control of its own future that I think it should take, but that's just my recommendation based on what I know right now.
So we've got that white paper and Matt's goals. Hold on to that, review that. We'll have a thoughtful discussion at our next meeting. Anything else on your town administrator's report?
No.
No. And there is no need to go to executive session. So if there's anything not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of today's meeting, I'll make a motion.
Actually, I have something.
Go ahead, Mike.
A resident of Cottage Colony reached out to me through email, concerns about the condition of the road and some requests. I'm going to take that email, I'm going to forward it to Lisa, she can forward it to the board if we can place that on our next agenda and then we can have a discussion about it as to what we can and cannot do for that particular problem.
Okay.
I don't want to go too far into it because it's not on our agenda, so I prefer to have it.
Mr. Chairman, I neglected to bring something up in my report that I feel like I should. We got a constituent inquiry recently regarding their fire insurance rates having gone up considerably. And the customer did some research that indicated that maybe our fire department had slipped in its ratings under the, interestingly enough, the insurance services organization, ISO, it's the same acronym as the ISO that does power allocations for the Northeast, for actual country. I actually went through a somewhat lengthy process of being able to get my hands on our reports. The town has not been rerated by the ISO. We are still a four community, not an eight. If someone's insurance is being rated as a weaker community for fire service than what we actually are, that quite possibly, according to the folks at ISO, is an error made by the insurance company. So customers need to interact with their insurance company and get the explanation and then ask ISO to quote unquote, "do an investigation." Because really, you cannot rate someone on their potential fire loss as a four, as an eight if the community's a four. It's just not allowed. So anybody who's seen a precipitous spike in the cost of their insurance and they haven't added to their house or done anything should, I mean, I could point them in the right direction. They're going to have to take care of it themselves because it's a private contract.
Perhaps that's something we should publicize so other people.
We're well rated for a small town.
Yeah.
The reason for that is you have good fire equipment, you do have a full-time fire service with adequate training. You have, a good part of the town is covered by the hydrant district. Where the hydrant district doesn't exist, you have water. It's relatively easy to get to. So a four is a long way from a one. Believe it or not, the city of Monseca, you know, of all places, is actually a Class One community. And you know it when you see it. There's water at every hydrant at ridiculous flows and pressures. And because it was an industrial community, so they built their water system to support mills and triple-decker homes. It's a completely different feeling. When you open a hydrant in Monseca, it's nuts. But we're a four, so we can hold our own. But the important thing is there has been no rating activity by ISO. It's a 10-year thing. We're in like year eight, a couple of years away. Nothing has changed about our fundamental rating as a fire risk community. So no one should be paying.
I'm just saying, maybe some people aren't aware of that, so maybe we should do a little more.
No, people are aware that they're built, this one.
They don't know what, how to address it.
Well, they don't.
Yeah.
Well, they thought it was on us, on our fire department. It's actually their insurance company has improperly rated their property.
Check with your home insurer.
If you, I mean, I can try to help people if they want to, if they've seen this, I mean, this was a Maple Street address. If it's more widespread around town with different carriers, it's a different issue. I actually think it's this specific property, this specific carrier has incorrectly rated that property.
Is it unfair to say who the carrier was?
I don't know.
Okay. All right. Well, spread word of mouth.
I was thinking if you send a notice out with people's tax bills, sometime if you received an inordinately high insurance bill.
I think we can put it on the website.
Yeah, something right outside, just get it out there.
A little banner or something.
No, I think that.
Sorry to keep you here five minutes.
Hey, that's all right. Anything else under 13? Intertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Seconded by Mike, seconded by Ross. Bless you, you've got to be a little quicker to get on those minutes. All those in favor. Bye.